Calling the meeting to order at 6:03. We have two sets of minutes to approve. The first is the budget hearing and trustee forum minutes. Are there any questions or corrections? Okay, someone to accept the minutes?
One second.
All in favor? All right, the regular meeting minutes. Any questions or comments? Someone move to accept? All in favor? Right. Period for public expression. All right, well, move on.
I'm looking at the owl. Literally, it's got, I realize it has two, it has two owl eyes.
That's why we sat you down there, so Boba wasn't in your face.
Report from Friends of the Library. They met last Thursday. They talked about three things. Most of the meeting was taken up with the Book and Author Luncheon, which will be December 4th at Two To' Injorno from 2:00 to 4:00. The speaker is John Avalon. He is a senior political analyst at CNN. The tickets are $50, and they can be purchased through Eventbrite. The second thing they talked about was a visit to a farm distillery in Sagaponak. That's not firmed up yet, and that would be in the spring. And then also, either in the spring or the early fall, they want to, it's been proposed that they have an art walk, which would entail visiting various galleries in and near Sag Harbor. So that's my report. We're skipping the treasurer's report for now. The director's report.
That's my report. It's just all HVAC, right? Just all HVAC, all the time for this director. Okay, so as, as you all know, the budget vote was approved with over about 86 and almost a half percent of voters who voted in support of our budget. Elliot and Robin were elected to the board. Michael was re-elected. And it was really nice because everybody who came in said really nice things about the library and how much they love it and the programming. And the number one compliment that we seem to get, and for me, it's so silly because I think it was like such an easy thing to do, is people love that we're doing programming at the Rotunda again. So people are just thrilled about that. Geothermal, we'll talk about that later, but it's just like, I feel like the Mandalorian, but for geothermal HVAC, like it is the way. So we'll talk about that later. We'll talk about Steinbeck under new business. We had three staff members attend the public notary training on October 13th, including myself. And we have the book to study. We also have another staff member who has studied for it too. So we're hoping to, in the new year, get everybody to, who's, who's taken that class to hopefully pass the exam, which requires a trip to Hop Hog. And then, you know, we'll get notary insurance because you need notary insurance if you're going to notarize things. And that is a service that we can offer here. And then, you know, the follow-up to that, of course, is always, well, if you're going to do notary, are you also going to do passports? And like, again, 2023, that's my goal, if we ever get the HVAC fixed. And I could focus on something else. So I did want to follow up on everything that went down with the Smithstown Library. Michael forwarded a couple of articles from, from Newsday. Thank you. Yeah.
Sorry.
I couldn't type it, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm just not, I don't subscribe.
Correctly, I wanted to subscribe so I could go back.
I know, but if ever you have problems, just tell me and I can put it in a different format. Because I'll send, I send like stuff from the Times or Newsday or whatever. Well, you have, like I said, if you have problems.
What was the gist of it?
So the gist of it is their budget passed, hooray, which is good. And of the 154 people, what was it, 15 people who were up for three seats? Three individuals who were pro-libraries and freedom of speech and our LGBTQ+ communities were elected to the board.
I think you were right, 15.
15 for three seats.
And how many? The gist of it was, this was the first time that political, local political parties had actually come out and endorsed and, and, and they were canvassing for these candidates. And if you go up in that area, you'll see people had signs all over the place. It was a very, very big political movement. It was actually kind of surprising that it came out the way it did because Smithtown is a very heavily Republican area, very heavily Republican area. And they, they made a concerted effort to have that, their slate of candidates elected.
Yeah.
So 15 for three seats and three?
And they have a board of seven, I believe. So interestingly enough, they had three seats off. One of the no votes, or no, I'm sorry, one of the people who voted to remove the displays as a result of, they're being investigated by the state for human rights violations as well, decided to step down, but public notices were already out. It was really close to the election, you know, when it's hard to sort of pull stuff back. So what was basically going to happen is that three people got elected. And if the three people who got elected were of one sort of political mindset, they would have the opportunity to appoint that fourth vacated seat. So it really was a very interesting election to watch for, for libraries and.
Now, there's, will still be appointing.
They'll still be appointing somebody, but presumably the person that they appoint will be somebody who, you know, keeps politics at libraries, which is what we want to do.
Clear, why is the fourth seat being appointed?
The fourth seat is being appointed because the trustee who held that seat
Oh, that's the one.
stepped down after, like, pretty close to the date of the election. And to try and do a write-in or put somebody on the ballot was something that they just thought was too much of a, of a sort of bridge to cross, especially since, interestingly enough, there are four branches in Smithtown and you're supposed to vote at your specific branch. But also, thank you, Dan. If you show up to the wrong branch to vote, you can vote at the wrong branch. So it's like a huge process to vote there, and it's all done by paper ballots.
They said that they were the largest library on Long Island.
They are the largest library district on Long Island. They have four buildings. Yeah.
Four branches.
So you have the Smithstown main, Kings Park, Comac. Not Hop Hog, Hop Hog has their own library. Smithstown main, Kings Park.
The branch.
Comac.
Comac.
Is it the village?
That's something, thank you. Yeah.
So the one who stepped down is one person who's being investigated between?
Oh, the whole library is being investigated for human rights violations. So as a result of them voting to remove the LGBTQ displays during Pride Month, started an investigation with Governor Hokel's office. And Governor Hokel is, the state is investigating them for human rights violations.
Say then, the trustees or staff?
The trustees, the library and its board.
Isn't there a lawsuit?
There is.
Making its way through.
Yeah, so what a time to be, what a time to be on that board. Can you imagine team people were like, yes, that's a mess I would like to settle.
So when you say that nobody had any complaints about us, we must be doing something.
That is right, like, so nobody had any complaints. And then finally, I just wanted to mention that the Public Library Directors Association of Long Island announced its first Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion Scholarship. I put a link there. It's to encourage people to go to library school. And we've already decided to rename it because Star Wars is problematic.
I would point out that I did not make any Star Wars comments about that. I saw it and I was like, nope.
So noted.
So, so, so that's, that's what we've got going on. If you look at our statistics, where, where, you know, we're a little low as compared to August. And, and we're a little low as compared to 2021, but we're still sort of in that range of, of where we should be and doing things. So where you see sort of the big difference is, is programming.
What were your two community programming attendants?
So we were counting each booth at Harbor Fest as a, a, you know, and Harbor Fest was over two days. You can even think it's like each booth, or you can think of it as each, like, one program, but each day. And we estimated about two, we served about 250 people at each booth, which I think is fair.
Yeah.
We weren't, we weren't likely.
Yeah, I wouldn't have asked.
So we, I think based upon the sheer amount of swag we gave out, we probably underestimated a little bit.
I see YA programs are kind of low.
They are. You know, you've got to remember, we sort of were without a YA librarian for a little bit. So we're just getting back into the swing of things. And I think September is hard because everybody's sort of getting back into school and back into the swing of things, but our numbers.
You have the same number of attendees for, oh, I'm sorry, same number of programs.
Yeah.
Kelly, the, the physical library collection circulation was down considerably. And it's, but it seems to be trending upwards.
Let's see, items physically checked out of the library? You know, it's down as compared to August because you're really just like August versus September. Again, September is kind of a quiet month.
Well, I was looking at the following one, total physical collection circulation. Is that, that, what is, what is that?
That number, so that number actually is everything, that includes renewals, that includes in library use. So people who come into the building and, you know, like read the newspaper or read a magazine or, you know, go through kids' books and check them in. That number can also flex a little bit depending upon how well the, yeah, how, how good the staff are at sort of collecting all the materials that everybody's used and scanning them into the system as like books that were read. Like, if a mom and a nanny are, or a mom, a mom and a nanny, sure. So mom and a nanny are here and they're reading children's books and they leave a stack on the table, whomever picks them up shouldn't just go shell them. They should check them in so that we get that cert stat we consider in library use, that circulation of materials. Yeah.
But the ebooks, the things of that nature is trending upwards.
Yeah, we're, I feel like we're a little, we're actually, for the first time in a long time, we're sort of holding steady with ebooks here. As you know, we have always been the outlier. We're one of the smallest libraries, but we have one of the biggest uses of that ebook Libby collection. And so there's like a base price you pay and then a pay-to-play price. And our pay-to-play price has always been sort of ridiculous. But this year, because of the change in population, we're not a baby library anymore. We're like a toddler-sized library. And our pay-to-play use is not as dramatically different as it has been in the past. So we're going to be paying a little bit more in terms of SCLs dues, but we're going to be paying like a little bit less, not a little bit less, but we're not going to be paying as much more as I had anticipated for ebook use. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Which is good, like, we were never going to continue on that trajectory. We always had really great buy-in in that ebook use here in this community.
But overall, not only us, but system, why is it people trending away from?
Physical books, absolutely. So people are trending away from physical books. And even within the Libby system, the ebook system, people are even sort of trending more towards ebooks in their cars. So, and the big thing that, audiobooks, yeah. Ebooks in their cars. I'm very eloquent tonight, if you have not noticed. And so audiobooks are really going up.
Bringing that up is because I know professionally, when we got away from filing everything, keeping papers and articles, that opened up space knows where.
Yeah.
So is that something that we can kind of bank on in the future?
So really, the, the two biggest sort of pushes to digital media are DVDs. Because when COVID happened, everybody who was holding out to not have Netflix and Hulu and streaming services gave up and bought into it. And the other thing are these audiobooks. And that's because cars don't come with, you got to pay extra to have a CD player in your car. So really what you'll see is you'll see these stop circulating and then audiobooks starts, you know, the e-audiobooks being what circulates. And I can see us probably not having these sometime in the next three to five years because there just won't be a need for them. It's sort of like music CDs, nobody's checking out music CDs.
Because we have a limited amount of space and it's nice that we are getting.
Yeah, so we, we would get space back. I mean, we're not ready to get rid of all of these gaps, but certainly, you know, I would, I would guess in three to five years, we're not going to be circulating DVDs and audiobooks.
But we saw that when the renovation of the library, they used to have fixed, they used to have fixed stations.
Yeah.
And we needed more of those. And then that's sort of trending down with wireless.
And then, you know, the other thing that's sort of funny is what a lot of bigger libraries are doing is they're circulating vinyl again. So they're amassing these huge vinyl collections. And it cracks me up because there are libraries who like discarded all their vinyl and went to like CDs and now they're like, let me go back and. Which, and vinyl's the best way to listen to music anyway, like, so. I'm not biased, it literally is. There's science behind that. Elliot, help me out, there's science behind that, right? Thank you.
The way you listen to it when you were 10 is the best way.
That's right.
Well, you have to read the liner, read the liner notes, yeah, look at the album cover.
And you had to flip the thing after 15 minutes.
So that, that is my report. If, if you want to, if we want to backtrack to the treasurer's report, are you?
Yeah, I have a question about doing passport services, are they doing it?
They do, and I'm going to.
But they're, they're understaffed.
The post office? So I, I would say the post office is, is understaffed. And then also, at least our experience in Bridgehampton, and I don't know if it's the same here, but I would check with them and I'd be inclined to believe that it is. They really hate doing passports at the post office.
It also just takes forever.
It takes forever.
And if you're cutting line behind somebody getting it done.
And people are trying all the time, you know, every time I'm in there. And somebody's trying to get mine. I mean, it's a slow process.
Doing a passport from start to finish with one person takes, like, I would say, because we did passports again in Bridgehampton. And I was a passport agent in, if it is one person, it's easily, and they have their paperwork filled out correctly. It's a half hour.
Usually they don't.
And they usually don't, and they don't have all of the documents that they need. And they need photos and they have their kids and. They do, but it's my understanding that they aren't doing them right now.
They lost their passport.
That's true. They might have, have lost three of them to John Trump.
How many did they do a month on average?
Oh, we did a ton. We probably did, if we did one a day, and we probably did, we probably did one appointment every day, but that appointment could, like, if it was a family of five, could have been five passports.
It's still a lot.
It's a ton.
Yeah, but the host office limits how many appointments they do. And I think they only do them like two days.
Yeah, so it would be by appointment only if we would, we would schedule them because it is time-consuming and you would want to do it when you had people who were here to do it.
But if you had the time, I mean, the library has.
If the library.
Great service.
It's an amazing service.
That brings people into the.
We would have people who would come out for the weekend from the city because they did not want to go stand in line at the passport facility in the city.
So you can, anybody can go to the champ in writing?
Yeah, you call up to make an appointment. Bridgehampton does it, Southampton does it, East Hampton does it.
Really?
Yeah, maybe mom talked to. Shelter Island does a.
Because I have, mine's retired and I haven't gone to the post office for exactly what I do.
Yeah, I know. But if I had, did it, did it, do you, can you just do a renewal? Can you do a DS82 or do you have to do a full-blown DS?
It's been expired for a couple of years.
Bring in your passport and I'll look at it and I'll tell you what paperwork you have to fill out. You might be able to just do it yourself. All right, treasurer's report?
Okay, well, I just drove out from the city and I was thinking while I was driving. Anytime, anytime, never missed a reading in my tenure. I missed this one. This really speaks for itself, it's not a lot to call. So, Diane said she. Very, very uneventful month. We did have two warrants because the first warrant ran only to the fifth. So Kelly and I decided to run a second. As soon as we get them all, they're all routine. There is a $2,000 final election expense in here. So that will go up like through that, my notes. Our magic number this month is 75%. We're not, what's done for the year. Revenues are pretty much not for the year. It's been in donations. Expenses are in good shape, 71.9%, so 3% below budget. And I left that accounting expense in there because we bought it running over. And we had newspaper expense, newsletter expense and election expense, putting us over on office expense. Repair and maintenance is at 92%, but buckle your seats.
Oh, yeah, buckle up, kids.
Because that's going to change, it's probably going to next month too. And then Kelly changed the month to the day that the mortgage payment is going to be taken out automatically from our account because we have had problems with that. The statement coming up for the weekend and you get a double hit next month. And that was going to happen in December. And that would mess our penny all thing up.
Yeah.
So that's wrapped it by now.
Um, I have a question. Employee support, 7,700, is it 22%? Is that because nobody's really gone anywhere today?
Yeah, more or less. You'll see, so in terms of employee support, so that's like conferences and travel and workshops and stuff. And so nobody's done anything that's really cost us too much money. That's going to go way up after the first week in November when we all go to Nylah.
That's right.
Yeah.
Do you get the grant?
We did not. You know, I think they Googleize code and they give it to places and, or parts of the state.
Just tell us, you've got the cash and the treasure cards as one. Is there any chance we could break that up? To kind of know what's on hand and what is.
I put it together because, you know, this analysis of the average we had, since we took all that out on the treasury notes, it would be like, you know, apples, orange, but I will put.
Well, you can keep it as, as a, there for the average, but just so we know, because it's, I was kind of looking to see it in the statement of financial position. I didn't see it, but where is it, it's listed as private?
It would be under the investment count. Well, 79 investment count. But I can put that.
No, I, I, as long as I know where to look for it, I just didn't know.
Anybody else? Good job, though.
Thank you, Bill. Next, approval of financial reports dated September 1st to September 30th to 2022. Someone move? Second?
My second.
All in favor? Next, approval of warrants, warrant numbered 12557 to 12596 and dated 9/11/2022 to 10/5/2022 in the amount of $62,504.52. All approved? Some move?
Some move.
Second? All in favor? Next, approval of warrant numbered 12597 GAT 12613 and dated 10/6/2022 to 10/12/2022 in the amount of $36,955.41. Someone move, please?
Some move.
Second?
I will second.
All in favor? All right. Committee reports, personnel?
Personnel, we didn't meet.
Finance?
You did not meet, but I'd like to have a meeting by the end of the year when you see more.
Yes, yeah.
Maybe December?
Yes, that, okay, because November's a little dicey with you guys.
Yeah, that's going away.
Yeah.
So it will set it.
Might as well do a building to ground, pick it up, you know.
Try fact.
Can I, can I ask one more question? Do you want me to see if Al Koster is, can be available for the finance meeting?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Okay. B and G?
B and G did not meet.
But I did let Dan on the roof.
And he's still here?
Policy? Outreach and public relations, but.
Did you want to mention?
I, oh, yeah, I can. Remember in the beginning, in beginning of the year when I said we needed to have a retreat? If we do it in next January, we get credit for it. We need the credit because we're going to be required to have.
Two hours, I think it is.
Yeah, we're going to.
It's a very low bar.
Have some continuing education or whatever they want to call it, and the retreat will count. So.
Where's the retreat?
It's going to be somewhere fabulous.
It's going to be your house, Bob.
In the summer, we can do it at my house. I don't have, it's too damn cold.
Uh, we, I mean.
You're at some points for the retreat.
Well, thanks.
It's not important, but you're welcome to it.
Your house is pretty.
Well, we'll find the next one.
I have a question. Why did the, the trustee, the whole trustee?
Training.
And that was many, I mean, like five or six hours. Do we have to do all of that and do repeated?
You are required to do, starting January, because that's the year we have to start reporting it. Two hours of training annually, and many, many things will count for that. There will be things you can do online. There will also be stuff coming up, something that's coming up and I'll, I'll, it's going to be recorded and available for trustees starting. It's gonna be recorded and available for trustees starting in January. Um, is they're having a parliamentarian do a program on how to properly run an open meeting. Um, so that's something that you'll be able to attend and that would count for your training. If we did a trustee retreat with. Um, you know, K verb over at system, he could run it. He technically has the authority to provide. Uh. Trustee training or like a Jerry Nichols or Rebecca Smith, Aldrich, we could certainly have some comments there. All people could.
Is this a new law?
It is a new law.
So we need, we need to do some long range.
We do, and so we can bring somebody in to do that long range plan.
Yes. We're lacking here for a little bit.
Yeah.
We've got a name, um.
How recent are our documents? Uh, we didn't meet.
Uh, but I'd like to get that band back together just to discuss, um. If we want to do any annual appeal. Um, I know we talked about that months ago, um, and I, I have a couple of ideas.
Yeah, well, it's nearing that time.
It's nearing that time, so if I'll sort of set up a time for a meeting sooner rather than later, if that's okay.
Okay.
All right.
Um, Matt Shash and Mule Park.
They, I called for a net on twelve, but I was unable to attend, but I could submit my report. And the reports I submit always use the website about the events at the library. So I told them about the two friends event and the collection of items for the pantry. And, um. They have completed phase one of the, uh, renovation to the grandstand and now they're. Waiting to get a revised estimate for phase two. And we probably know whether the third, the school, district is gonna have a bunch, another vote. On whether, you know, to prove will be seven hundred thousand in the capital fund by this business land on Mars and. And to prove going ahead with that, so that's.
Well, they have a lawsuit. Neighbors have a lawsuit against the school. Yeah.
Um, yeah, so it's gonna be exciting time. That's my life, my, my, my heart's for.
Okay, thank you. Um, onto all businesses.
The HVAC, you may have noticed, um, our water feature is back. I know we're, we're like even, even the Patriots now are just like, oh, it's the water feature, you know, when it's, when it's running, it's very super, I guess.
It is quite a lot of stuff.
It is. Um. And I will say, just because this is my life, right? When, um, Paul Boyce, whose foot was in a boot, he was in like a surfing accident. Um, was here, we were trying to catch water to do a jar test. And, um, you know, we almost, I was almost baby Jessica in the wild, cause there, here I am like on the ground. And so as I was telling the story to the fellows from Anron, who were here the next day to fix a mechanical issue. They fashioned me a, a, a water collection tool out of a piece of PVC pipe. And a plastic jug. And so Richard and I were able to much more safely collect water. Um, and I just think, you know, make friends with your, your, your vendors because they will make sure you don't fall down a well. So I put in everybody's binder, um, a little geothermal timeline, which might have typos, cause I finished it, I think at about. Four fifteen this afternoon. And then also a proposal from PW Roser. Um, I want to go through the geothermal timeline with you, uh, real quick. I broke it up. To like wells balancing controls and mechanicals, which is, uh, lines and tigers and bears on the line. Those are all the parts of the system. So the redevelopment of the wells was completed the day before the budget vote, which is great. It did not take us as long as they had thought. Um, at that time, a temporary emergency relief valve was installed on the diffusion wells to assist. Um, and when we say temporary, it means we could turn it off if, if it did not need assistance. Um. And that was on the Union Street side of the property. Those just sort of go in, into the, the ground. Um, which was all very well and good. We were holding steady. And then we had those torrential rainstorms and those dry wells were like. We can hold a lot of water or we can hold rainwater. But you can't get both. And so in the rain, um, Richard and I reattached, which is the heaviest, like it doesn't look that heavy. Until you're in the rain and, um, it was really mostly Richard. I was just there for show. Like I was just like. I'm helping, I swear, but I wasn't. Um. And so we got the relief hose reattached. Hooray. And it's been there since the theft. Uh, on the twelfth, Paul Boyce from PW Roser came out, we walked the property, we talked about some of the issues, we looked at the machines. Um, I almost fell into the well, good times. Uh, and then he said, you know, he asked me for a couple of other things and he said, well, we'll get back to you with the proposal. When we spoke, one of the things I, he seemed to be more. Positive in terms of being able to remediate this system. His sort of feeling was based upon his conversations with Chris Okin about the well and the cameraing of the well and looking. At what was pulled out when they pulled the pumps, that it's a bacterial issue. Um, biofilm, as I like to call it, we have sea monkeys. Um, and so he's sort of feeling like. The biofilm, it's, is what's preventing our diffusion wells from diffusing and either there. There should be a way that we can get around that.
Chemically true.
Uh, you cannot chemically treat it. Um, you can filter the water before it comes into the system and gets returned back into. Um, the aquifer, but you cannot chemically treat the water that's in the aquifer and then dump that chemically treated water back into the aquifer. Because we have an open system. So there's a couple of different things that they can do, but they first have to sort of confirm that, yes, it is biofilm and it's not biofilm and. A thousand other things that could be.
So we can filter it and then recycle it.
Yes, so we can filter the goo out, whether it's biofilm or it's iron or it's. But then you have to find a spot to put the water filtration.
It's like a bread or water.
No, 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 it's like fifty pound bags of salt and somebody with goggles and gloves and.
And then you have to.
And then, yeah, so one of the things I was very clear with them about was, here's the thing. I don't want to keep the system alive with very expensive maintenance. That's not. The solution here. So if we're gonna see if this is still a viable solution, okay, these are our options. And then we sort of need to decide like. Is this really like, what's, what's the return on investment long term, right?
It just seems like even the amount of time you're spending on this versus like library.
Yeah.
Which I understand this is part of.
Like we could be doing library stuff, yeah.
Yeah, it's just such a race.
Yeah, yeah, um.
We should just cut bait and swim in the goo.
Swim in the group, swim with the sea monkeys. And then, of course, people are like, wait, does that mean we can't drink the tap water? And I'm like, no, that's not accounting water. Um, so it, it could be a bunch of, of different things, but they, they need to do more stuff. Um, I did collect the jar test water and like I said, when you hold it up, it looks like sea monkeys. He was sort of like. Let it sit for a while and see what comes to the bottom. And I emailed him and I was like, nothing went to the bottom. It's all like little. Little sea monkey. If you've had sea monkeys, you know, it looks like sea monkeys. Um. And so he was like, that makes sense. I know what you're talking about. And I was like, hooray. I'm not a crazy woman. And so we got the proposal. I sent it all out to you today. Chris, also in the mail this week, we received a permit renewal from New York State. We are supposed to be renewing our well permit annually. Um. We are not the only people who did not know you're supposed to. Do your well permit annually, um, and that requires us giving like monthly, like, like keeping track of our flow monthly. And our system lacks the, um. Meter for us to get that reading off of. So Chris was out here today to see if he could find that meter. And he's like, hey, kid, you don't got one. Um, not a big deal. We can put one in. However. There's no point in putting one in if our ultimate plan is to ditch geothermal.
How much was it?
Five grand, maybe. He said he's gonna give me a proposal. He's like, it's like in the five grand range. I mean, we could do it. But if we end up, you know, abandoning the wells before the end of the year.
And what happens with the non-compliance?
Yeah.
Are we gonna get fined?
Well, so far they missed.
So far, so good.
He strikes that from the minutes.
You know, I think, I think that's, it's sort of a wait and see. He, Chris was very. Laid back about it. He's like, you are not the first people in this boat. You are not the last people in this boat. He goes, wells go in. You, you know, libraries, businesses, schools get handed. The permit packet. And then if you get to page five, where it says that you're required to have your wells. Your, your thing annually renewed. So he was sort of like, don't. Don't let it keep you up at night. But I did want to let you all know, but don't let it keep you up at night. Um, we have time. So like, there's an application that you file. And he's gonna basically. Do the paperwork for us that says like, we don't know, but we endeavor to know in the future. Well, I think that we got the permit because we had all of those tests to, like, we had all the information we needed for the permit. We just.
Oh, okay, so we never have.
No, we have the permit.
Well, no, if you have a permit, then we should have met all.
Yeah, but there was no, yeah, but there was no post inspection. It was no certificate of occupancy for the value that.
Yeah. So, so. Yeah. It's fine. Yeah, yeah. So I mean, like. It's fine, it's fine. Um, don't let it keep you up at night. That's what I was told, so I'm not going to. Um, so while all of this was going on, we had air path with ACS in the building and they walked around and. Reset all of our VAVs, which are, you know, sort of the vents and the sensors that make the building the temperature that it is to make sure we had appropriate airflow. What the required airflow is. Um, they had ACS here. Um, ACS was. Here for a very long time and had to fix quite a number of things so that everything was sort of set and squared away and ready to go. I read Air Path's report. I spoke with John Maza, who is the, the, uh, engineer with Air Path. And I told him that he made a typo and that he needed to correct it before I was gonna give it to you, because it's kind of a confusing typo. He confused eight. Said HP two does heating and HP three does cooling, but it's actually HP two does cooling and HP three does heating. And I didn't want to give you a report that was, was incorrect. Um, there's a couple of things that ACS has to correct. There are a couple of things that Anron has to correct. Um, one of which is to get HP one up and running again. We're waiting for a part for it. Um, what John Maza did at Air Path is he picked up the phone and he called Scott and spoke to Scott. He picked up the phone and he called Lenny Van Sickle. And they're hoping to get. The HP one part in and up and running so that they can tentatively meet on October twenty seventh. And make sure that with HP one up and running and doing cooling. That two and three can take care of the heating and that we will have a toasty warm building. We will still have our water feature, but. Things will, will be sort of all put together there. Um, controls, um. Everything sort of works. Um, we had some issues. We worked it out. Mechanical, same thing. We had some issues. We worked it out. And, um, that's, that's where we're at. So right now, the one thing on the table that we do have to talk about and decide upon. And I hope you all either read all six pages of this or read my too long, didn't read email. Um, this is a proposal from PW Roser to, um, basically, uh, look at our system and say. You know, there's something we can do to save it, um, and we can take the next step or, or not, sort of. Figure it out. So.
Are they gonna actually do the work themselves or?
There.
Sub it up.
There's the water testing. We're gonna hire somebody to do the water testing. Uh, we'll either use who they recommend or we'll use Harry Goldman. Um, and then they'll do all of, they'll look at all of our plans. Um, they'll make sure that like our asphalt's are in fact has, is it. Has it spelt? They'll look at all of the water testing. And they'll also, you know, if the, the solution is something like. Like, well, maybe we need to put another well in and it needs to be deeper, or maybe this is an option. They'll sort of. Look enough to say like, oh, they have space for us to put another well in, or oh, they don't have space for us to put another well in. They're not doing any engineering. So like for nine thousand dollars, we're not getting a plan to fix this thing. There's ten thousand dollars. They're just doing. Um.
But, yes.
But if you then go back and say, okay, we want you to fix this. Sign it. They now have done all the background stuff, so the next bill would be.
Much, much bigger.
Ten thousand dollars less.
Yeah.
Would it?
One saying bigger, one saying less, which is it?
I mean, you should negotiate that.
Well, it would be, um.
Will they tell you what they're not including?
Yeah, yeah. So, so the next, the next step after they do this would be all of those. Those exclusions, right? So, um, the redesign or design of a new geothermal system. You know, any of the permitting, um, you know, subsurface exfoleration, test pits, soil borings, all of those things.
But we won't know that because they don't know what they don't know yet.
They don't know what they don't know yet. So this is, this is exploratory.
So are you looking for approval at this time, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think that this is, this is the next step. We can't have a hose in the yard.
They would not do the soil boring. You'd have to do that, but that's not expensive.
Yeah.
Thousand dollars is about.
We basically have no choice, right?
We have no choice. That's really what it is.
So let's make a motion.
I move to approve the PWGC contract.
Also.
At nine thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars.
Yep.
Yeah.
And just saying.
Second, please.
I think Bill's second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Oppose. Okay, um. New business, Steinbeck.
So it's on here because, um, you know, uh. It's on here. Um, you know, we have, we all read the paper. Um, so I would just say the long and short of it is, I don't want to get into any sort of deep conversation. The working group for the partnership has the writing center, center proposal on the table. The mayor's. Coming up with something else until there's some sort of movement, which, you know, sort of invites the library. To participate in a meaningful way, there's nothing to discuss. So it's really between. Them and the mayor to, to figure out and come to us, you know. Yeah, like it's, it's just, you know, um, the devil's in the details as far as I'm concerned and I just, I'm gonna wait till we hit that point. Um. Everybody's with that? Perfect.
Bob, is there anything you want to say?
Not really.
One of the partners in this.
Well, I'm not with the partnership, but the partnership is a sister organization.
No, I mean, you're one of the principals in this stuff.
Not really. I mean, no, I mean, I was involved early on with Steinbeck, uh, working with the former mayor, Kathleen Mulcahy. I had been approached by, I don't know if I ever mentioned this to all you guys, but I had been approached by. Um, the person, a friend who's on the board of directors at the Steinbeck Center of San Jose University. In California, and we immediately set up a time. To meet with the mayor, Catherine Soska, um, the guy in charge and my friend Marcela. And, um, unfortunately, it became obvious that they didn't have the capabilities to do any fundraising or any such thing. But Kathleen seemed like she was very interested in, um, pursuing a conversation, but then. Uh, Catherine, um, sort of took the lead and then partnership got involved. So I haven't, I've been on the. Email list, but I really haven't been involved because I have my own feelings about it, just in terms of CPF, which we don't need to get into right now. But I will say, if it does happen, it would be a wonderful thing for the library to be involved, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, my, my sort of standard answer is if, if the library can, can. Be involved with anything that happens at that Steinbeck House, we would obviously entertain any discussion, you know, any discussion, any proposal.
But I think you're also really.
We're there yet.
And you're wise not to get into the whole political.
Yes.
My asthma, if that's the right, stay out of it. Yes, stay out of it.
I don't have, I don't have time for those meetings. I have my own meetings.
At some point, some either way, absolutely. It makes no sense not to be, I mean.
Yeah, so put them.
Work out their way.
All right. All right. So we can move on to.
Nominee committee. Um, well, I think it's self-explanatory. Uh, we need to come up, we need a small committee uh, to come up with recommendations for next year's officers uh, and chairs. Um, so I'll take if any people want to volunteer, otherwise I will have to appoint.
Is it typically done with outgoing members, though?
Yeah, that's usually, it's the, the president of the board and whichever outgoing members.
Still have to volunteer.
Oh, I, I assume, so we, we volunteer to be on the nominating committee to make Michael treasurer or secretary, for instance. I volunteer Michael as.
First, you volunteer for the committee.
I understand, how many people do you need?
Um, three is good.
And it's typically people who are leaving, yeah, Michael, yeah, sure.
I'll volunteer, sure.
Yeah.
All right.
It's called get back.
Don't. For anything.
We, we only need one.
Okay, yeah.
All right.
And usually the, uh, the, uh, yeah, I was going to say the club head, so it's selected by the, um.
Chair.
The chairperson.
Chairs.
Chair peoples.
No, not, yeah, the chair people's usually just selected by the president.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So we're really just treasurer and secretary.
Secretary and president.
Yeah. Okay.
Just for the record, I know how to spill potatoes.
Oh, very good. Backhand is about potatoes.
Okay, I'll be in touch about setting up.
Do you think we can wait till November 1st or 12th? Yeah, okay, good.
Absolutely. And it should only be maybe an hour.
Yeah, okay. Great, we'll have fun.
Sure.
It says in the bylaws that you can be a chair of the committee for two years.
Yeah, you don't have to be.
I don't ever recall seeing anything.
Hold on, let me pull up the bylaws.
Right. Yeah, it's usually, it changes around a little bit, but I don't ever recall seeing anything about that.
Yeah, I.
There.
Kathy Brody, I think, oh, that's what.
The, the Congress. There is something in the bylaws about nominating.
But it's not the nominee.
Yeah. How long you can hold an office.
I know.
Of the committee chairs, yeah. I just, I had that for a while, too, so maybe I was there to break it up, so you could go back for another two.
I don't ever.
How many times she goes by?
Yeah, I never heard that before.
No.
All right.
By the chairs of the committee you're talking.
Yeah. Okay.
I wonder if we couldn't try, I mean, maybe this is against our bylaws also, but if we couldn't try asking people if they want to volunteer for, you know, secretary, treasurer, you know, before we nominate.
Well, that's within your purview. That's.
Yeah. Why couldn't we just ask as an open meeting?
Some things that are kind of traditional.
Okay.
I think we have to do it, because it's in our bylaws.
Okay, that's whatever.
So give me, I can pull it up, if you give me one second, let me just get through the bylaws here. Um, when we elect to take office, any questions?
Yeah. You were the first secretary that actually resigned, Bob. You resigned your position before the first meeting.
I most certainly did, Diane graciously. You're very sweet, I'm forever grateful. I would, I would have been a disaster.
I've actually never been secretary, but I, but I used to volunteer when, you know, the secretary wasn't there, I would volunteer, so that I figured I'd get my.
But I don't know why they're saying this, because being secretary is the best job. It really is. Oh, it is, it is. Diane.
I know, it's better. Yeah, when you have you, um, your meeting next, my, or your rep, last meeting, you mentioned, you mentioned in asking someone to attend.
That was for Bill.
No, 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 Kelly mentioned that there was somebody that she was going to ask.
Yeah, during the trench of the court.
Yeah, we usually team up, because we have prior members.
How somebody.
No, but there was some, there was somebody that, uh, that Kelly had specifically mentioned.
Yes.
Or.
Oh, they do.
For building a church.
And then we had the personnel.
Oh, Al Costa, from the, sorry, Al Costa. So he's the new auditor, sorry.
I didn't do it.
Okay, so I am not, oh, here we go. So here, here is, the normal term of office for each officer shall be one calendar year commencing blah, blah, blah. A nominating committee shall be appointed by the president no later than October of each year. The nominating committee shall present to the board its recommendation of officers for the upcoming year, no later than the regular December meeting of the board. At this meeting, additional nominations will be accepted from the floor, and then a vote will be taken by secret ballot um, for each office. A simple majority of the whole board, including vacancies, is required to win an election. If it is an uncontested election, secret ballot is not required.
But it doesn't say anything about the, the.
Oh, let me, let me go on. Letter G says, although not mandatory, it is suggested that trustees hold officer positions for no longer than two consecutive years to bring both diversity and oversight to the operations.
Yeah, that's still about the officer.
Yeah, we're looking at.
Oh, the committees, the committees are appointed.
Yes, but we want to know how many, how many years you can be chair.
Be the chair of a particular committee?
Six years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, because he was an architect, and we knew it, an architect.
It does, it does not specify, it just says, the duties and responsibilities of these committees shall be normally performed by such committees to support the operations of the board. All committee members and chairpersons shall be appointed by the president, and all shall be trustees.
Right, so it's just the officers that can.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, any other uh, questions about that? Period for public expression. Questions from the public.
She didn't, she didn't even log in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we're just.
Is anybody logged in?
She, you know what, she'll be doing the Loyal Act Civic Council meeting tonight, because they have all the candidates.
Yes.
Okay, um, we don't need an executive session?
We do not.
Would someone move to adjourn the meeting?
I moved in the future. At seven oh one.
You got it.
I'll second that. And congratulations, we were under an hour. Thank you. Let's, let's keep up that trajectory.